KTH Consulting applicant in Lenawar, A. Paracha property owner for the rezoning of certain property from R 110 to residential single-family 10,000 square foot lot minimum to R 16 residential single-family 6,000 square foot lot minimum. The rezoning is requested to allow the development of a single-family subdivision with approximately 47 lots with an area of open space. The subject property is located on the west side of the South Slaughterhouse Canyon Road, south of Mission Boulevard and is 11.18 acres. The property is further described as a portion of the north half of the southeast quarter of section 19, T 21N, R 16W of the G and SRM Mojave County, Arizona. Richard?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. This is a rezoning request to rezon property off of Slaughterhouse Canyon Road from R 110 to R 16. The applicant is KTH Consulting Kathy Tackett Hicks. Property owner is Dr. Paracha. And the rezoning is requested to allow the development of a single-family subdivision with approximately 47 lots with an area of open space. The property is located on the west side of Slaughterhouse Canyon Road, south of Mission Boulevard. This is the site. The top photos are looking west from Slaughterhouse Canyon Road toward the property itself. The bottom photo is taken kind of south of the property looking uphill. As I mentioned, the part of the property is in a sloped area which would be preserved for open space. That photo shows that portion of the property. It's currently zoned R 110. The property to the west is also R 110, which is the Planet Bluffs II subdivision. It's a plied subdivision but is not approved at this point. On the east side of Slaughterhouse Canyon Road is Canyon Bluffs II subdivision, which is mostly developed at this point. We have undeveloped C 2 HMR zoning to the north on lots along Mission Boulevard extending all the way up to Multi-Mount Road. And then to the south is undeveloped property, zone primarily R 140. This map shows the utilities in the area. Property would be served as sewer. The sewer had to extend through the subdivision. There's also water in the area. Property itself is about 11 acres. The medium, the general plan landing use designation is medium-density residential three to eight units per acre. This area is part of the original incorporation of the city in 1952. It was originally zoned, the north half was zoned R 110, the south half was zoned O. The entire property was then rezoned to R 110 in 2004 when there was an anticipated development of the site, which didn't occur. There's no record of any development on the site. The physical characteristics, as I mentioned, the southern part does sleep, does slope steeply to the south. The north half of the property, north two-thirds, I guess you could say, are relatively flat. It's not within any floodplain. Property is accessed off of Slaughterhouse Canyon Road, which is a paved street with curb-guttered sidewalk on the east side of the street, but no improvements on the west side adjacent to the property. Those improvements would have to be extended with any development of the site. We posted the site with a zoning notice on October 25th. Public notice was published in the newspaper. We sent a letter to the surrounding property owners within 300 feet. We didn't receive any comments from any property owners, and there was no objections from any departments or agencies. So the applicant has submitted a conceptual layout, which is in your packet, showing 47 subdivision lots and three new streets. All future lots will need to meet the R 16 dimensional requirements. The layout showed 50-foot wide streets. However, standards recently were changed to require 54-foot wide local streets, so that would have to be addressed during the subdivision process. Talked a little bit about the open space. They're intending to preserve the steeper sloped areas with open space, the areas that are not really conducive to small lot development. Staff would recommend limiting grading, or I'm sorry, limiting any development in areas of 15% or greater average cross slopes. There's a 15-foot wide transwestern pipeline easement located along the west side of the property. The easement will have to be left open and unfenced, and there will be no accessory structures permitted in the easement. So our recommendation would be to concern making these lots deeper in order to have a usable backyard. There's also existing power line that crosses the southern part of the property that will need to be relocated. Also, we're recommending the vehicle non-access easement, a VNAE, be required along the future lots that abut the rear portion of but Slaughterhouse Canyon Road, preventing driveway access. Show that on the map here. Lots in question will be in roughly about the street in zero. Can see the lot, proposed lot layout. This will have to be, of course, refined at the subdivision stage. This is just conceptual at this point. So in accordance with our zoning ordinance, any official, any change to the official zoning map, Commission is supposed to make findings on the following items. One is a demonstrated need for the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district. Both the existing zoning district of R 16 and R 110, the proposed district, both permit single-family homes. As you know, it's a very popular form of residential development in Kingman currently. We're seeing a pretty high number of homes being constructed at this time, most of which are in the 6 to 10,000 square foot lot minimum area. So the demand for the somewhat smaller lots does seem to be there. So I think you can make a case that there's a demonstrated need. The suitability of the proposed zoning district, the R 16 zoning would be really an extension or continuation of the existing zoning to the east, which is already partially developed, would appear to be suitable for the location in the surrounding community. Probably the main impact, or I guess difference between the R 110 and R 16 zoning would be future traffic impacts. If you had 47 developed single-family lots, the estimated vehicle trips per day based upon ITE's manual would create about 447 vehicle trips per day. The zoning was left to R 110, and we estimated maybe around 30 lots would be developed. That would be around 285 trips per day. So a difference of about 162 trips. And just to kind of further define what we mean by trip, a trip is any, any time a vehicle passes a specific point. So you may think of a trip as go to the store and come back. That's a trip. That's actually considered two trips because you're passing the same spot twice. Slaughterhouse Canyon Road functions as a collector's street, and that, those types of streets normally are able to handle at least 1,000 trips per day. If you add in the potential 447 trips, add that to what's already being created by the existing subdivision at full buildout, this would still be less than 1,000 trips per day. However, a TIA, a traffic impact analysis, would be required at the time of development of the subdivision to see what additional traffic issues may arise and what mitigation measures might be needed. Conformist with the general plan, if the site is developed with 47 homes over 11 acres, that would equate to just over four units per acre. Our general plan projects three to eight units per acre on the site, so the request would be in conformance with the general plan. So staff recommendation, the Commission may recommend approval of the rezoning of R 110 to R 16 with the conditions stated below. One, areas on-site with average cross slope of 15% or greater is defined by section 21 Hillside Development of the Kingman zoning ordinance, shall be retained for open space purposes with the existing slopes left undisturbed. Two, the developer shall work with Unisource to relocate any existing power line, or to relocate, and existing power line that crosses the subject property. Three, future lot design shall accommodate the transwestern pipeline easement located along the western property boundary. And four, future lot design shall incorporate a vehicle non-access easement along any lots butting Slaughterhouse Canyon Road to prevent driveway access to the street. So that's the staff recommendation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may
In the plot layout you had, is there, I guess, I know Slaughterhouse, I haven't been out there, but is there, will be access or an opening or a parking area for people to, if they wanted to go use the canyon?
Well, the road is already existing, as you know. So the entrances to the subdivision would be here and approximately. The road itself continues beyond that point. It will not change.
Okay.
It will remain as is. It's just that it would be improved, just as it is on the east side of the road with curb-guttered sidewalk to the, down to the.
And then obviously, on the picture, the only, the only R 16 homes is pictured right there, right now presently.
Correct. That area to the east where the homes are existing are already R 16. So that would extend the zoning district to the west side of the roadway.
Now, I'm assuming in that subject site, there will be some lots that will be up to 10,000? There could be.
Right. So this is just conceptual at this point.
Right.
And as I mentioned, the roadway width will have to change slightly to 54 feet. So it's conceivable that, and also if there's, if they have to accommodate this easement back here, some lots may have to be a little deeper. 47 is an estimated number of lots, but it could change at the subdivision stage. Probably won't increase, it could decrease.
All right. Anybody else have any further questions? Richard?
Just one real quick. On the open spaces, just essentially undeveloped, he's a property, the developer's not planning on doing any amenities in that area at all?
That's my understanding, although the applicant is here, and she could probably answer that, but my understanding is they're just leaving that alone because it is a hillside area at this time. So this portion here.
And there is a drainage through that proposed, I believe?
They're showing, yeah, drainage easement right here.
With this, the PUE. Now, is it a 31-foot PUE total?
The, yeah, the transwestern pipeline easement is actually 30 feet. And it's, but it's 15 feet on their property and 15 feet on the property to the west. So it straddles the property line. North of there, there is an additional 31-foot PUE and drainage easement, which is on this property here, which is outside of their property boundary. And presumably, that's where the sewer connection would come, and come here.
Can you put the live photo back up?
So, yeah, so any sewer line, I'm assuming the fall of land, you have to come off of Mission Boulevard and then extending to the property this way.
The said road updates gutter and curbing, but only on the one side. What's on the other side right now?
It's curb-guttered sidewalk on this side, and the other side is, well, it's a half street, what it is, half plus probably eight feet. So it's not entirely improved, but it will have to be entirely approved, improved at the time of development.
So it's currently a half street?
It's a half street, right.
Part of our 700, seven, how many miles of unpaved? Okay.
Yeah, it's all unpaved as you go south of this property boundary. It's all unpaved, all the way down to the railroad tracks where it dead ends. At one time, there was a crossing there, but that was closed years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
How wide are the streets?
Well, Slaughterhouse Canyon Road itself, I think, has an 80-foot wide right of way.
Inside?
You said they're going to be proposed to be 54.
The ones inside will have to be 54. That's our new standard. It used to be 50, but we've changed that because now the sidewalks have to be a foot wider than previously.
Okay.
When are they estimating the, to move forward if it's approved?
I'm not sure exactly the timeframe, but perhaps the applicant can answer that.
It's actually a nice area. I went by there yesterday and looked at the subdivision across the road. It's very well done.
Any further questions, Richard? All right. Thank you, Richard.
Thanks, Richard.
I'll open this up to the general public. Anybody, please step forward and give us your name.
My name is Matthew Elke. I live in the neighborhood across the way from there. I bought my house there a year and a half ago. When I bought my house, as it backs up to that empty lot, I asked, is that going to be more dense housing over there? And I was specifically told, no, those are 10,000 square foot lots. I said, okay, I will buy the house then. I don't want to live in a dense housing area. And that's the main reason why I bought my house. On top of that, the picture that he showed, the live picture, there's a complete area already completed to the east of our neighborhood with roads cut in and lots cut that haven't even been touched yet. Also, adding another 47 homes to that neighborhood, we're gonna have to have a stoplight, put a Jackson in Wallopi. We need it already because our children can't cross the street to get to school. They all have to be given rides in the morning because there's no stoplight and no crosswalk to cross Wallopi. Where also, if they put in 47 homes, we're gonna need a right turn lane. If we're gonna have that many automobiles, up to 1,000 trips a day, making a right turn into there, we're gonna need a right turn lane. My aunt and uncle were rear-ended at KFC turning in there one time because people are going to Wallopi at 40 miles an hour. All the more reason why we need a crosswalk and a stoplight for our children before anything is approved. Jackson Street is also basically a one-lane road. That's how you turn in off Wallopi to get to these neighborhoods. It needs to be made a two-lane road before anything else is done. It's full of potholes, and when two cars are coming down, we have to get out of each other's way to make it down that road. I'm also very curious about where they're gonna put the construction dumpsters while they're building the homes there. Because in our neighborhood, now they're parking them on the streets and with the kids playing, you know, with dumpsters on our streets. And the builders have told us, no, they've been approved to have that done. And I've thought about calling it in, but I don't want to cause any more trouble than I already am.
Rich, can you put the live photo up, please?
You can see there off to the right, all those roads that are labeled and the lots you can see that are cut in. All those have not even been touched yet. I say they start over there before they even consider rezoning an area that's built for 10,000 square lots.
You live adjacent in the little houses right there?
Yes, sir. Right there, it's that house right there in that empty lot.
Rich, can you give them the pointer?
Sure.
And just out of curiosity, what's the lot size that you have?
Mine's 8,800 square feet.
And the rest of them, are they R 110 or R 16 in that subdivision?
Our subdivisions are R 16.
So it's essentially the same density as what you already have?
True, but like I said, I didn't want to have, I didn't want to live in a large neighborhood with the same density. I wouldn't have bought my house if this had already gone through. That's just myself. And I'm not the only one against this in my neighborhood. Many people couldn't make it here on 5:30 on a weekday. They really wanted to come. I'm not the only one from my neighborhood that's against this. Many people are against it. And hopefully, it'll go to city council and we can discuss, they'll show up for that one.
We accept letters too. If there is, you know, that kind of concern, you know, they can always write a letter, you know, and, you know, pose it.
I'll make a note of that, and I'll have them.
Approximately how many kids live in your neighborhood now?
It's tough to say. I would say 15 or so. Younger, 15 younger.
There's 20 houses maybe up in there. 25?
No, that's all filled in now. We're approximately over 40 homes in the neighborhood.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
So this isn't, this doesn't reflect all the homes that are in that area?
No, no. Almost all those empty lots around the homes are all filled in now. My home isn't even on there. Still an empty lot in that picture.
I got to talk to Google to get them to straighten that up.
Yeah, and that's the neighborhood's main worries, is the stoplight and the, how Jackson Road that we turn on off of, you know, Slaughterhouse Canyon Road is a good, good road. So is Mission Boulevard, which is the cross street there. But then you turn up Jackson to make your left on the Wallopi, and that road is awful. It's full of potholes and dangerous to make a left turn on there. In fact, I had to wait probably five minutes when I was driving here to make a left turn in the evening. It's insane. And to add that many more homes and that many more cars, it's just, it's gonna be out of control. So I think that needs to be addressed and fixed before any more homes are added, and the problem grows worse.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment from the public? Please step, one of you, please step forward and state your name, please, and.
Good evening, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I'm the applicant. I got a bad leg from playing football in the street. Twisted ankle because I'm old. I've listened to his comments, and I guess I want to reiterate, first of all, the R 16 butted up to an R 16 across the street is perfectly complementary. That's what we want to do. There is an existing R 10 zoning designation for this, which will allow 30 to 32 homes. This proposal is 45 to 47 homes. The difference is only 15 homes, approximately. So the increase is not that much. They have existing R 16s, and lots are a little bit larger. This gentleman's is 8,800. Some of these lots are gonna be, well, several will be larger than 6,000. But they're not gonna be a lot of 10,000-acre lots. Those ones budding up on the south side are larger. The lots along the west side are deeper, a little bit larger because of the transwestern pipeline easement. There are existing situations with the traffic in the roads right now. Rich was clear that a traffic impact analysis had to be done, and that would be addressed. If a traffic signal is warranted as a result of this project, then it will be required. But traffic signals are not, I mean, there's not something that we can say, I just want one here because it looks bad. It does have to be warranted as a part of the ASHTO requirement. So traffic impact analysis will be done to determine if there's gonna be any adverse impacts, and whatever those are have to be addressed by this. The R 16 is the perfect zoning for this because it matches that other street right there where both those north roads, Diamondback, Diamondback Road, the access to ours is also the access to theirs. Those lots are similar in size. That's precisely good planning. I don't, I'm unsure, he was not aware that no matter what, there was gonna be 30 or 32 homes there in this proposal. It's not, it's not different than what he already has, so I don't fully understand that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Obviously, there's some children that already live in the existing part of that subdivision with a little bit more condensed housing, as he explained. Plans of putting any green space in for these kids to play in?
The open space for this is at the south end.
Answer my question.
But it's not improved?
It's not improved.
It's not improved, no.
Just a big hole in the wall so somebody could go through there.
It's the, it's the slowdown into the bottom of Slaughterhouse.
Correct.
Yeah. So it's left open instead of trying to develop that as hillside lots. But the traffic generated from this project is not gonna go through theirs, so the children on those streets are not gonna have any increased traffic. They're gonna come out on Slaughterhouse and go either Jackson or over to whatever that other street is, whatever, you know, out there. But it doesn't go through their subdivision, is what I'm saying. So their existing traffic concerns in their community would stay the same. There's no flow-through traffic. I guess I just want to jump back on this little drawing here. I did draw a couple of public utility easements and drainage easements because we do intend to take the sewer out to that northeast corner and up. It follows the slope of the land. It makes sense. There's existing utilities there, and so that is exactly where we'd take the sewer. I did include drainage easement on the south end because I feel we'll have the drainage on that south end will go down to that open space.
Those lots adjacent just to the north are all commercial lots? Is that correct?
Those are commercials. C 2 H M, geez, C 2 HMR. That's part of the Mission Hills 2 tract.
And between commercial and residential will be a block wall, I believe it's.
Yeah, it's required to have some.
Commercial development is responsible for that, or is this subdivision gonna do that?
Well, in other places, it's whoever builds first has to build that wall, correct?
Technically, the commercial development is responsible, but since there's nothing there yet, then I, you know, presumably, the residential homes would build the walls as they build houses. But they're not required to put the whole wall up at the time of development. It'd just be what, you know, each individual house would have to build their wall. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the public?
Yeah, I will. Face of Joe Ratigan.
We won't have to duck, will we?
To start with, when he said, he said, oh, my name and everything.
Please state your name, please.
Okay, Jerry Nelson.
Thank you.
I live right off of Jackson Street, thank. And when he said he sent everybody letters 300 yards away, you know how many houses that is?
300 feet.
Four. Three?
Feet. 300 feet.
So he's mailing letters to the dirt. He's not getting, okay. And you want to talk about the traffic off of Wallopi and Jackson where they gotta put the roads in and everything? There's no room. There's, it's just, I'm over there all day. I'm a wildlife photographer, and that's my main problem. This guy lives over there, Chukawala. All my hawks live over there. There's deer over there. There's owls over there. And I just, should fishing game be involved? I'm shaking because of my diabetes. I'm sorry.
All right. Take a deep breath. Calm down.
I'm over there all day taking pictures of these guys, and there, there's just no way that that many people, houses can get on this little street coming in. There are signals, there's nowhere for a signal. You can't get out on Wallopi now.
So you're talking on Jackson?
Yeah. And I go back and forth 10, 12 times a day. It's just, because there's a liquor store right here, Wallopi Quick Stop.
Okay.
They're pulling out this way. Subway's coming out this way. Mission Bank is this way. And then you get down a little more, there's the Quick Stop, the other people, and they're all doing 40, 45, you know. We've had a few accidents there, of course, because I think coming off the mountain, you know, off the Wallopi Mountain, they don't realize how fast they're going. And so when they hit that flat area, and you can go in where they're talking about on the next street where BLM is.
Right.
But they're still, we're talking little streets this big, and you cannot hoof away the whole mountain over a couple houses. And where are these guys gonna eat? That's all I gotta say. It's, you know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the public? I see none, closed. Alright, opening up discussion.
Rich, when are they planning to do the, the impact analysis on the streets? And are they gonna take it all the way down to Wallopie?
So under the street, our street policy, it would be something that would be done at the time of the preliminary subdivision re, um, analysis. So that would be part of their um, terminal to us. And so by the time it came before you, um, you would, that would be part of what you'd be reviewing as well, and our, our, our review and our commentary, I guess, and analysis of that, of their.
Okay, and they mentioned, is it Jackson Street in reference to the potholes and it's Jackson, right?
Yes.
Can, can we find out what the city's um, plan is for road repair through that area and how far out on the, on the um, agenda that is, only um.
Or if it's on the agenda.
Or if it's even on the agenda, um, yeah, exactly. After all, you know, we, we understand that money is a big issue.
Right.
City right now, so we're gonna be looking at doing this, repairing roads would be essential. And where's that money gonna come from?
We, we can certainly ask them that question.
Thank you.
Okay.
The traffic study is going to include Mission Boulevard, Jackson, and I'm not even, I don't know the name of the road coming in from BLM, what's?
Uh, that would be Adams. So.
That will be included in the.
That probably is within the scope of the, of the TIA, yes.
None of this area is protected for wildlife at this time, right? So there's not something that's holding that up as far as?
No, I, I'm not aware of any endangered species or anything on this property, that would be an issue.
Okay.
They had a, um, I don't know if this is a question probably for the developer, but there was some concern, I don't know if I'm about the um, tri, you know, the construction materials and the, this stuff, is, is the block wall gonna go around the subdivision first? To prevent that like the, with that, is that something to be? Cause that does create a lot of debris.
Kathy Tackett Hicks again, I did want to say about the timing, so the construction and staging areas will all be on this property, so they won't go outside of that. Um, but the next step is gonna be to go to the municipal utilities commission and make sure that we have our sewer and water. And then we do have, um, you know, as soon as we get that approval, hopefully, then we'll proceed with getting the engineering, the TIA um, completed for the preliminary plat and come back to you. And then construction, or then the final plat after that, and then construction. So um, I don't, I, since we're so far away, I don't know what the planning is for any block wall, I will tell you that normally that's not the very first thing that happens if there are not residences right next to it. And there are not um, structures on the north or the west. Um, they'll pull in on Diamondback, I would guess, and build out that road first. Um, and the infrastructure, I mean, the infrastructure first, subgrade work, and then the asphalt, and then probably build the wall. That's my guess, but it's a year out, so.
Yeah, cause sometimes they do, at each individual is sold, then they will build out the wall, which still creates a lot of debris.
Right.
We get a lot of complaints, people get a lot of complaints about that. And I understand the resident, concerned resident about the debris and stuff, so I was just wondering um, about that, because uh, and it's also, are you, you're the subdivider, but are you gonna be um, selling, or would you just intention to sell the lots, or would it just be?
I would have to ask Dr. Paratche.
Oh, okay, I was just wondering. Cause then sometimes you get different builders that think different ways, is all I'm asking.
Is this a phased development, or it's all?
No, I, I asked him about that, and his goal right now, today, is to get approvals for it and then proceed with developing out the road and the infrastructure all at once. That's the most cost-effective.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you answering the question.
Um, no.
Are you closed?
Hey, this is Matthew Helkey again. Um, I'd just like to address the fact that every question that was asked of her, she said probably, maybe, it might happen. Can we just postpone this whole zoning until they come up with some answers of what's gonna happen? Not just this probably, maybe, it might happen. I'd, I'd like to know what's gonna happen before we say yes or no.
Well, from, from my understanding, Rich, whatever, whatever decision we do tonight, this will be coming back forward to us again, or for a final, so this is just a preliminary step?
Correct, the, the, this is just the rezoning and then it goes to the council, and then the preliminary plat will come back before you at some point in the future for approval, and at that point, there would be a lot more definitive answers to some of these questions, including the traffic issues, timing of fence construction, road construction, things like that.
So it won't be rezoned until all these are addressed and have answers?
Right, this is just a, this is just preliminary.
Okay.
We, we can make a recommendation, but, or, or deny, but it's still in the preliminary, so until we get all the answers, everybody will be.
Okay, I guess I'm somewhat misunderstood what's happening here.
That's perfectly, perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, the rezoning, if the council approves it, would go into effect, but the development site cannot go into effect until the preliminary plat is approved, and then, then the final plat has, has to be approved. So that can be actually a couple of year process.
But, but what they're, but saying that the rezone is what you're dealing with right now.
Correct.
So you're just, yeah, making a recommendation. So that's what the citizen was wanting to understand. This is a recommendation for a rezone, and then it would go before the city council and they would determine then, and then if they approved it, it would be rezoned. Right?
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure he knew. Alright.
I'll take a shot at this because I, knowing that there's already an existing subdivision that more or less mirrors this proposed subdivision, I, I don't see an issue here. Um. I, I know Jackson can be improved, Mission Boulevard more or less is improved. There's more than one point of access to the property. I don't see a downside to rezoning this, so I would support the.
So is that a motion?
No, it's just for discussion.
Okay.
At this point.
You know, I agree, um, there is a mirrored subdivision that's right across the roadway. Um, so I don't see, you know, really any kind of an impact difference of rezoning it. But I would like to maybe make an exception on there for the rezone. You know, go ahead and approve the rezone, but also base it on the impact study of the traffic. You know, cause I know that they're channeling a lot of traffic, you know, onto um, Jackson. You know, and then you've got everybody coming down Wallopie Mountain Road, you know, and you're, it, it's becoming a, a cluster. We already have a situation like that on Stockton Hill, I would hate for history to repeat itself and not look at it, you know, for in the future of future developments. So I think that traffic impact study is very important to this.
I agree with you as well, and, and it's gonna come as a shock to you later. Don't, don't take it personal.
Don't get used to it.
Don't get used to it. Um, I think having the roads, um, I think that's gonna be critical, we got some improvement, improvements that are on the existing roads. I'm not, um, I'm in favor of, of going ahead and getting it sent to the next stage, but I think we have some other issues to address, is if it gets approved by council, we need to be addressing the, the um, impact on the Wallopie Mountain Road coming in and off from there, and how we're going to address those with the turn lanes and stuff. Cause Wallopie Mountain Road, I agree, I drive it every day. And that, they are sitting there lined up some, some mornings trying to get out, so I agree. We're adding fuel to the fire at that point.
Yep.
Unfortunately, we don't have the ability to recommend
Right.
that there be a light installed on Jackson or.
No, it's gonna be based on the study.
Although that would be our recommendation if we could do that. So knowing that, I would move to approve this rezoning.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion, and a motion's been seconded, and we got any further discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner DeBries?
Aye.
Commissioner Frederickson?
Aye.
Commissioner, um, aye. Commissioner McCoy is aye.
Aye.
George is aye, okay. Five, five, the motion carries, five to zero.
Alright, thank you.
I don't know if it's a line or anything, but I just want to make sure that they, that your voice is very well heard and we all understand exactly where they're coming from, but, um, so, but those are things that'll be addressed later on, that's, right?
Alright, item B, discussion related to sheds. Discussion item related to unregulated placement of sheds and possible options to require a planning and zoning permit so staff can review the setbacks prior to a property owner placing the shed on their property. This discussion also includes a brief section related to roof requirements of building materials. Sylvia?
Evening.
How you doing?
I'll switch it up from cargo containers and do, do a new subject here.
Yay.
What is with you with these little tiny buildings?
Really?
Similarity. Alright, so a shed is considered an accessory structure to the primary residence and is regulated by the City of Phoenix zoning ordinance. If an accessory structure, including sheds, is less than two hundred square feet in size, a property owner does not need to obtain a building permit or meet the development appearance criteria. The placement of the shed needs to meet certain setbacks, however, many property owners do not realize this since there is no permit required. These are just basically the types of sheds we're talking about tonight. The setback requirements for sheds in the R1, R2, RMH residential zoning districts are as follows, and I put a little chart here. Um, accessory buildings and use, and uses shall be located to the rear or the front yard. Setback and should not be closer than four feet to any alley line or rear lot line, and shall not be closer to any side lot line and required side yard. Basically, they can be up to four foot to the rear, and then they'd have to meet all these side setbacks here. In the rural residential zoning district, accessory buildings are not required to be located up to the four feet to the rear of the property like the other districts. They basically go by the standard zoning setbacks in that district, which shows um, rear yard of twenty, front side of thirty, side yard twenty, front thirty. So the accessory building would have to meet the, those setbacks in. Did a quick comparison in other cities, uh, Phoenix was basically like us, um, do not require a building permit if accessory building size is under two hundred square feet, then the placement of the shed needs to meet the setbacks. Uh, Scotts, Scottsdale does not require applicant to build, uh, get a building permit if it's under two hundred square feet, but the pla, placement of the shed needs to meet the setbacks. And they do have planning staff review the site plan prior to placement on a shed, of the shed. Okay, then City of Flagstaff does not require building permit if it's under two hundred square feet. Placement of shed needs to meet the setbacks, and then there is a zoning permit. Some similarity. Some options we have is to revise the City of Phoenix zoning ordinance to require a planning and zoning permit or review of all accessory structures prior to placement on any lot within city limits. There would be no fee for this permit review unless the planning and zoning division is able to budget that in the next budget cycle. Uh, planning and zoning would review to ensure setbacks, and if development appearance criteria are met, and that would be for the other types of buildings, not sheds. Okay, so um, the second option was to exempt prefabricated sheds such as those purchased at home improvement stores or online from the development appearance criteria. Metal buildings used as accessory structures such as a garage would not be exempt from the development appearance criteria, just to get that straight. Uh, prefabricated shed materials typically include wood, resin, and or colored metal. This exemption would eliminate the current requirement for a shed to have stucco or siding over metal. This exemption would also eliminate the requirement for roof materials such as composite tile or clay tiles on prefabricated sheds. The majority of the prefab sheds meet the development appearance criteria except for the metal. The brief review of these sheds can, the sizes, uh, anywhere from like a hundred and twenty square feet, a hundred and forty square feet on average, but there are a few that are larger, or we can leave the zoning ordinance as it is. Here's a couple pictures that came up from one of the um, residents that came to our meeting when we had the cargo containers, when he was saying, well, these sheds don't look as nice as some, as, as these cargo containers, and so he left me these photos, but this is basically what we were talking about. When we don't have upperment, many of the sheds end up being right up against the wall. Um, or, that's more than anything, um, this case is just kind of a wooden shed, it looks like they just built it too close to the wall. So if we are able to review it, we can make sure that setbacks are being, and mostly. Um, so the summary of sheds is in order to address the concern related to the non-regulation of accessory structures under two hundred square feet, sheds, staff can prepare a text amendment for the planning and zoning consider, and the exemption would be of the prefabricated sheds from the development appearance criteria. And this would allow property owners to purchase pre-made sheds or shed kits that may have exterior materials such as wood, metal, or resin. A requirement for property owners to obtain a planning and zoning permit or review is also what we can add. That review would be of setbacks prior to placement of the shed on their property, and this may reduce the misplacement of the shed. That's kind of the first I would dig, if you wanna ask me any questions here, and then I just had a little additional one on. Keep going.
Go ahead and keep going.
Okay. So this is a little brief discussion on metal buildings, we've already talked about how the development appearance criteria has changed so that we have stucco required on these now. Uh, we need just a little additional clarification. Um, basically, we had an ordinance in June fifth which required all accessory building development appearance criteria. Text amendment required property owners to build accessory structures with metal buildings to stucco or use other acceptable building materials as outlined in the development appearance criteria. Amendment also requires the roof of metal buildings to have a surface of wood shake switching to custom metal that mimics other material and. Problem with this requirement is that the roofs of the metal building is not typically engineered for the adding of roof tiles and shingles, like clay tiles. Um, the other issue that we found was that the development appearance criteria requires a roof pitch of three point five twelve, and most accessory buildings constructed are typically having a pitch of less. Um, planning and zoning division and building division don't object to exempting metal meeting the roof, roof requirements of development appearance criteria. Uh, metal buildings will still need to meet exterior retitels such as the stucco. The remaining list is looking at exempting. And summary, um, in order to clarify roof requirements for metal buildings, staff can prepare a text amendment for the planning and zoning exemption of metal buildings from the roof requirements and development appearance criteria would allow constructed with a lower pitch roof, and not require the roof to be layered with composite shingles, clay tile, or other hard roof material. And at this time, you can ask, back my research, take no action, or make a motion. Draft a text amendment to the zoning line to exempt sheds from the development appearance criteria. Require planning and zoning sheds regardless of size, and exempt metal buildings from the roof requirements in the development appearance. Got any questions?
Are the sheds encroaching on setbacks a really big issue? Is that something that has caused issues in town, or what's going on?
Well, we, we haven't necessarily ran into complaining that they're, how to say, how to say? Or people complaining that they're building them right against their wall, so their neighbors are right, right there, um, looking at them, and I guess probably it was brought up more so because of the cargo container discussion we had before. And I guess probably it was brought up more so because of the cargo container discussion we had before. Yeah, most of the complaints are just basically that it's too close to my eye wall.
So can you give me an idea of how many complaints that we're talking about? A dozen or two or less than or?
Probably more than a dozen, dozen range, dozen or less over the last year, not all at once.
So for just 12?
Well, this guy brought four by himself, so.
For 12 complaints, we're proposing to change all those specifications?
More or less to make sure that the residents are meeting setbacks. That they really, not everybody knows what the setbacks are. And being that they are not required to get a permit.
What if it's under 200 square feet?
That's, that's the ones we're talking about, is the under 200 square foot.
There's still a.
They don't require a permit.
There's still a setback requirement.
Correct.
Most people don't know we have that ordinance. It's been in effect.
So it's the rear of the, the rear of the shed or the rear property is four feet?
Commissioner, so they're required or allowed really to put the shed that's under 200 square or other accessory structures as well up to forfeit to the rear of the property. And then they have to still meet any side.
Sides.
So it'd be five on the side, right?
Depending on the zone, right.
Is there a distinction between site built under 200 square feet or portable under 200 square feet? No matter what, it's still, the setback, proposed setback is, will still be the same?
It is still the same, Commissioner, and the same for, really, all accessory structures are required to meet that setback. And now we're just trying to ensure that the ones that fall under the 200 square feet and don't require the permit are meeting that same setback.
So the 550 houses in town that don't meet that setback would get letters? Is that what you're saying?
They don't intend to drive up and down the street.
Well, no, but it would be.
So a point of clarification, you're suggesting that nothing can be built four feet, within four feet of a back wall or a minimum of five feet from a side wall depending on the zoning of the property? Could be five feet, 10 feet, whatever.
Commissioner, really what I'm doing is that we have a zoning ordinance already in place that states these accessory structures are supposed to meet these certain setbacks. And because there is no way to review them prior to people buying the kits and putting them on their property, trying to find a way to maybe help them know where they can place it because they're not naturally coming down to our office and ask.
So you just want to standardize, standardize it?
Yeah, and so taking the direction of doing like a planning permit, whether it's just, it's an actual permit or an over-the-counter review, that would help reduce.
Gotcha.
What we're looking for.
Let me throw a monkey wrench in here for just a minute. What if somebody wants to build one of these log playground equipments areas and in the same area that a shed would take up? Are they going to be allowed to do that or is this?
Sure, that's something we would probably have to consider. And if we wanted to consider those, then I could try to make it in the definition somehow clear.
Wouldn't it make more sense if you, if you don't want a shed within, in that four feet, back space or five feet side space? Wouldn't it make more sense to just make a blanket ordinance that said, "You can't build anything in this space," plain and simple? Instead of saying, "You can't build a shed there."
Correct, Commissioner, really it says all accessory structures. However, the topic of sheds came up, so the focal point was more about the sheds tonight. But it's still considered an accessory structure. So really, the ordinance does state that all accessory structures cannot be in this area. So for clarification, I could clarify.
There is an existing ordinance, correct?
Correct, yes.
So this seems redundant to me. All right, but.
No, Commissioner, that's fine. It's just what we don't have is any way to preliminary tell people unless we advertise it or put it on Facebook or, and say, "Look, you really can't put these," or maybe try to let Home Depot know the people that are selling them, "Please try to tell your customers you can't put them there." We have nothing really to say.
So what you're asking of this, of this commission is to do something that's standard, or I, standard, I can't say that word tonight. That if somebody calls you, you can say, "This is, this is the standard procedure for this item."
But that already exists, she said.
No, I.
You can't.
Yes.
Let me try to clarify one more time. So there's two things, right? That with the sheds, we have a development appearance criteria also that has come into play. So there's two things we're looking at. And one is to require a permit for those structures that are under 200 square feet so that we can have a chance to make sure people are putting it where it's supposed to go.
How much is that permit gonna cost?
Actually, for us, it would have to not be a fee. We couldn't even request for a fee right now. And I don't know if we will in the next budget cycle or not, but right now it would be a fee.
I have a question. You know, it's already, you know, the setbacks and everything, it's already an ordinance, a city ordinance. And I think it would impact the city as far as like staff if we made it a requirement to have it go under review. I think that, you know, y'all are already stretched very thin. And I think that would impact the city greatly. I think maybe if we just put something, you know, if there is concern over the sheds, just put like a flash bulletin, you know, on the website. On the, um, the website, you know, sheds, these are the requirements, you know, and that you must observe, you know, the setbacks. You know, making sure that all the suppliers in the area are aware of this. If they're a supplier, they have a business license, send them a letter and say, "This is part of your requirement upon selling, you know, or placing these sheds, that you have to observe the setbacks," rather than putting it on to staff. I mean, because it's already there. And I think that that would alleviate a lot off your shoulders. And the second thing with the metal buildings, putting tile and roofing on the, the metal buildings, that's not part of the engineering on those plans when that engineer stamps it, right? Yeah, I mean, they're only stamping that for the pitch and the weight of the materials that they're reviewing. So if you require to have the tile or, you know, or, or the roofing material on there, does that have to take on an additional engineer to review that?
That's a good question, Commissioner Short.
I mean, that, that's.
The direction we're, we're trying to go is, is not requiring.
Right, you're actually asking us to not require and change the roof.
So not require it at all? Have you been requiring all that?
It hasn't happened yet. But before we got to this point, we realized that we were running into this for the people that are gonna start building.
You're trying to get ahead of the.
Yes.
Right, because see, that, you know, to my knowledge, that, you know, I have, you know, with the building permits and everything, you would have to have an additional, if the city requires it, it would. If that engineer stamped it just for the materials that, you know, he's reviewing and then you require an additional on that, I think it would require an additional stamp. So I would just not have it.
If your shed is 200 square feet, I'm just gonna use this 200 mark. And they decide they're gonna run power to that, are you requiring a permit when they decide they're gonna add power to these sheds?
Commissioner, I'm pretty sure that they have to get a permit for that.
Yes.
I, I'm trying to. Start getting your area, your area here.
Hi, good evening, Councilor, Commission. So there, there's a few different things that I can maybe help address. So the first one with power, yes, any kind of power or anything like that, it would be, have to be permitted. And we've been working on this setback and, and so with the building department, we field easily three to five or six a month questions. Generally, the questions of the setbacks come in as a disgruntled neighbor or an angry neighbor. Two of those pictures, the big issue there was the site restriction that it came up. You know, it just looks ugly. And so those are the, those are the comments that we get. So we do field quite a few of those. This, this is an issue. I mean, so now we're talking three or five a month. I mean, we'll, we'll easily, and, and we could run it, well, we can't really run a report because there are questions. However, you know, 40 to 50 times a year, we'll get questions from 90% of them disgruntled neighbors that just doesn't like the shed or what it's built of or any of that stuff. So that's one of the things, I agree that it does hamper staff to, to do this. And, and I don't necessarily disagree that maybe a, you know, a, some kind of campaign, informational campaign, you know, to go through that prior to that. We've, we've discussed that too. So that's kind of a comment on that part of steel buildings. So the beauty of the steel building is that it's engineered completely around to, to, for those materials. And you're absolutely correct. The, the roof is engineered mostly with six or eight foot span on the trusses with pearlins that metal sets on top of them. And, and like Sylvia says, we haven't really run across that. There's been a couple. Those roof pitches are what we're finding is normally lower than a 412, 312. They're more of a 1.25, 1% pitch. And then still requiring the walls to be, to match the criteria, the, you know, the criteria of the house. Stucco, still have a steel roof, it's lower, you really don't see that it's a steel roof. So there has been a couple instances where people have done a steel frame, but then they've done a wood truss that's engineered for tile or whatever. So that kind of does take away the beauty. And I think that's kind of, that's the whole goal of, of changing this is to, to stop making them do those kind of roofs, you know, or requiring, before it really gets there. Was there any other questions that came up?
My last part was, um, it's criteria to exempt this shed. Because there's still kits that are over 200 square feet that are, you know, material. So if we don't go with, maybe still consider exempting sheds.
I think if you talk to the suppliers in town that sell these things other than, yeah, Home Depot or the guy up on Stockton Hill that's building sheds, make it an informational campaign, put it in the water bill like they do other notices that they do, put it on the website. We don't need to do this.
Commissioner, correct. We could do that with the setback information, but we still have a few sheds that are over 200 that are gonna be metal. Those we have to consider whether.
If they're over 200 feet, they need to have a permit anyway, so that.
Right, but they're required to meet.
Okay.
Pre-made sheds don't always.
That's something that, that's already on the book, right? That they need a permit? And so when somebody comes in and says, "I need a permit for a shed that's however big it is," that's when you address it already because your information is.
But I think what she's trying to determine is the roofing of these metal sheds. They're, they're asking us to not require that.
Exactly.
Well, we could go back though too. We had, we already had documentation on the books about cargo containers. And we spent two years addressing it.
Don't bring that up.
So I mean, it's the same.
Don't go there.
I, I think we're just trying to.
I'm, I would be against having to do a composite.
Well, whatever it is, it's not, I think whatever it is that's not working and it's, and it's popped up to both the building and the planning and zoning, how do we address this for the future?
Well, you know, you put the exterior sidewalls with whatever.
Well, no, but, but people are putting them up against their property lines. How, how do we address that when we already have the ordinance? And I think that's what they're trying to convey.
They're gonna violate it whether you have a new ordinance that says you have to have.
Unfortunately, but.
If, if, if the information is not getting out there, that's, that's the issue. It's an informational issue because the, the ordinance already exists. So why create another one?
I don't think we need to create another one. I just think that maybe we need to provide information to the suppliers and say that, you know, you have to observe the setbacks. When, when somebody is purchasing it, maybe have like, have them, you know, have a form that you have to observe that your setbacks, you need to check your zoning, you need to check, you know, what are your setbacks for your zone? And maybe have them initial it during a purchase agreement or something, you know? I, I, I think that would be the way to go. But my next question is on those small little metal buildings that have like those sliding doors, are you saying that on those that they have to be aesthetically correct with the stucco and all of that?
Commissioner, yes, that's one of the three. So the first one was related to permits for checking setbacks. The second item was if we get a shed that's over 200 square feet that is required the permit, when they come in, they are required to meet the development appearance criteria. And sometimes these metal ones don't. So we were asking to exempt those type of sheds from the development appearance criteria. It's actually laxing, laxing the ordinance a bit. So if we get 200 square foot, it requires a permit, we were trying to exempt those.
On the roof only?
No, actually the appearance. Because they come in, they were already pre-made and I guess like in this case could be green and metal. That wouldn't technically meet our developments appearance criteria, which isn't right now.
Well, it would be the maximum size on a metal shed that you would exempt it from wood siding or.
Yeah, Commissioner McCoy, I'd have to come up with a good definition for you to, to clarify a prefabricated shed.
I would tend to think from my knowledge, though, those sheds probably aren't over 100 square foot. Those ones you buy and erect yourself?
Well, those, those.
That green one?
Green one, yeah, those are not very large. But I believe that you're wanting to exempt metal sheds, period.
Over 200 square feet.
Up to, but you don't, but you don't know how big up to is.
I, I did a little initial research of how, how large they can get.
And is there a definition between a shed and a metal garage?
Yes, there's a difference. Yeah, I typically, I'm talking more of the pre-made like kits that you can build up, get from, not safe.
Well.
Home Depot.
Yes. So if it's a metal shed and the ordinance states, you know, 200 square feet, so why couldn't we just exempt that, you know, a metal shed up to 200 square feet? Make it kind of simple.
Because she's saying over 200 square feet.
Well, if it's over 200 square feet, then they would require a permit, then they would have to be aesthetically correct.
Well.
And that's the, that's what we're having a slight issue with. Because, I mean, technically, this 240 square feet metal shed.
They need to meet the requirements.
Yeah, so we're trying to exempt those.
Because you, you could get an eight by 20 cargo trailer. That's under two, that's under 200 square feet, so we're gonna exempt, exempt that?
No.
No, over 200. Over 200 square feet.
Let not cop use this.
Well, no, but.
Instead of having this discussion this evening, actually, it, it needs to be massaged a little bit.
Okay.
Because I'm not quite sure staff knows what staff wants.
Actually. Okay, so this is, this is what we were trying to do tonight, getting back to the, you can ask me to bring back, like you said, more research on, on these sheds or take no action today. Otherwise, there was three things we were looking at, and that was exempting the sheds from the development appearance criteria. That would include me bringing back a proposed text amendment that we could talk about it more and a definition to clarify what defining a sheds or what buildings that we're gonna allow in this criteria. and a definition to clarify what defining a sheds or what buildings that we're gonna allow in this criteria. Uh, require planning and zoning permits for sheds regardless of size. So that's an option, or we can do the educational informational piece instead. And then the last one was exempting metal buildings from the roof requirement in the development appearance criteria. And that's only, so if there's any of those three, we can take care of it, it would be great.
Two of your examples here, we are, or they are, they do require a site review and a, some sort of a permit for the, for the properties, the zoning permit. So they're in the same boat as we're in.
Well, one, the requirement for planning and zoning permits for the sheds regardless of the size. She's already, they've already addressed that. So we're all past that because you said that doing the pamphlet, that would be your suggestion, like sending out informational to the people that sell these. Exempting, I mean, uh, requiring, uh, exempting the sheds from the development appearance criteria over two hundred square feet. The challenge that I feel is that the, you are gonna have these um, areas that have um, that um, if, if you do that, that they're gonna have nice homes with shed, metal sheds in the back, right, over two hundred feet if they're permitted, that don't conform to the home. It could look bad, right? And therefore, um, and without a being HOA, you only have one HOA in the city of Kingman. You'd have to have a lot of civil suits suing to correct the situation. So that I, that, my personal opinion, I think that that is not a good situation there. Um, and then the exempting the metal buildings from the roof requirements. I think you, that you had been addressed to bring more information back, right? Wasn't that right?
Commissioner, I think that was the one thing we were okay with.
The metal buildings with the roof requirements?
Exempting the roof requirements.
Is that what it was? Okay.
They're only, on the last one, you're, you're taking anything, any of the metal sheds. As long as they fit the side requirements, we're not asking him to re-engineer the roof to meet a roof requirement because of the pitch.
Okay.
I don't have an issue with that because they're used to the floor anyways. They're not gonna be sticking up over that. Um, so I think we could probably vote on that one for sure. But the required planning and zoning permits for sheds regardless of size, I'm not opposed to that either. And, and I'm just gonna throw this out there is with everything that we have been dealing with, at least since I've been on this commission and I know previously, um, is cargo containers. And I think right now in the light of things, I think we need to still keep a handle on what is being put into yards. And I think even if it's not costing them anything, I'm not opposed to putting it before planning and zoning for a quick five-minute review. Saying, you know what, this is not meeting setbacks. This is your requirements. It gives our community an opportunity to go ask, get exactly what they need so they do it right the first time. And not have to go, am I doing it right or am I not? And it makes your life a little easier too because it's, it's just there. And so I'm not opposed to that either.
I agree.
I agree.
That's assuming that somebody's actually gonna go get the permit.
So we can't, we can't hold their hands.
And that's, and that's, I'm glad you said that because we can't hold their hands. What point, at what, at what point do you stop trying to regulate what people do?
I think, I think some probably needs to be, go ahead Keith.
No, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, that's okay.
So, and kind of uh, expand a little bit on Commissioner De Vries. Uh, is what she said is that we're very close within the city to be accepting all of these applications electronically. Uh, we presently are accepting electronically, we presently review them electronically. So the chance of the people having to physically come down to the city is very little. Uh, if, if they just submit their, and it's very simple to do, they'll submit that. Uh, Sylvia and Rich already do their plan review electronically, uh, on residential especially. So um, most of, most, all of that will be done online anyway. And we're about, I don't know, I keep saying this, this keeps like a constant two weeks away. But it's, but we're getting very close to that. So that'll be a little bit easier for them to do that.
And I think getting that information out there to get your, if they're approved via email or via electronic on the city's website, boom, 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 you know, that, I think that's easy.
And, and I will, I wanna say one more thing since, is that I, I have seen where the storage, I mean, the storage shed is right up to the wall. And all of a sudden you go out in your backyard and there's a storage shed right up to the wall. And it isn't on your property, but it feels like it is. It's like boom, that's all you see. And I can see how I feel violated.
Right.
So I'm just saying, I could see that. It's not their property, but, so I think that online permitting thing would be really a lot easier.
And, and I don't disagree with that, but it ought to be, I think, a complaint-driven issue and not.
Changing everything.
Changing everything.
I don't think we're gonna be going out there many, we're just keeping a uniform standard of what we're already doing. And we can't have, I think that's probably, because being, as we're all well aware, our ordinances have not been revised for forty-seven years. And we're just band-aiding them all the time until we get a complete, hopefully a review in the next fiscal year. But um, I think we're just, I think we're just staying in line with what we already have, not deviating anyway and making it confusing that a, you know, you, you don't have to have something for this and, you know, we're just, we're not.
Not changing anything.
Yeah.
Not changing anything, just saying, online permitting, um, to, to show them where they're supposed to go. A lot of people don't even know that we have half the ordinances that we have.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so there's nothing changed. It's just showing them by submitting something, what your plan is, and then showing them where it's gonna go. I think it's a great idea.
I think if the.
Hold off a minute, sir.
I think if there's no impact on staff and they have the tools to address it, and it's quick and brief, you know, I think that would be just fine. But um, you know, if it's gonna be a long process, I think we just should leave it alone.
So you need a, you need a mo, you need a motion?
Yes.
On whatever.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to um, where there's no roofing requirements on steel buildings. Steel has to meet the side aesthetics, but exempt the roofing from the steel buildings.
I'll second it.
Um, we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion?
Up to what size or what, from what size are you exempting?
Well, a steel, um, a metal shed and a steel building, they're totally different.
Okay, so are you talking sheds or built?
Talking buildings.
Sheds?
No.
Under a certain amount of square.
Nope, I didn't address the sheds.
Footage are exempt.
Buildings.
The bottom one is exempt metal buildings from the roof requirements. And that's all that is. It's not addressing the sheds, it's just addressing the buildings.
The buildings.
I know lawyers that would argue that a shed and a building's the same thing. So I'd, forgive me for, for being anal about this, but.
Will we leave them the permits up?
Um, leave the, you know, she can bring it back for, you know, further discussion. And we can figure out what the size limit is for the, the metal sheds. But take the metal buildings off the table.
Well, this. How far out are you from doing some of this online? Are you, are you really close to doing most of it now?
We have online going now. It's already online, so.
So if I were to get online to the city and put, put in my lot location, is that what you're gonna require? Is a lot location, lot size?
Correct, um, Keith, this is more, which is more of your.
Sorry.
More of you, yeah.
So if I, so if I get online and what are, what is the questions that are gonna be asked of me when I get ready to do this?
So basically what we've done, we've mimicked uh, all of our application process. So it's all streamlined into that. So it's, it's our present application that we do now would be our planning and zoning. All the applications are, are the ones we've been using for some time. They're just put into.
Electronic format.
An online format, yeah. And we are, and again, we're, we are accepting them. The only thing that's not online, where we've been using the product, is the availability for the citizens to get on and do everything online. Um, and we just had to tweak it a little bit, you know, as far as questions. And one of the questions was the, the pitch on a steel roof, that we had to make some adjustments in how we're doing that. So uh, and I said earlier, it's, it seems like it's constantly, we're two weeks away. And that's probably been about eight weeks now. So we're, we're, we're getting very close to that.
It'll be this year.
Yeah, guaranteed.
So if we table this for December's meeting, you can give us an update as to where we are online with stuff?
Yes, this, yeah, this, this, the outcome of this or, or either one doesn't affect, you know, what we're doing here. It's just a matter of, now it's just getting the right people together with the company to, to get it turned on. So it's kind of where we're at, so. But presently, they can get online on cityofkingman.gov and they can actually pull the application out, fill it out online and then submit it, fax it or email it or something. So there's still that ability. It's just not as easy as it's gonna be. We're just drop down and filling in and stuff, so it just makes it so much easier.
Yeah, when are we gonna make it easy?
It is, yeah. Uh, we're, we're hoping that's the case.
Well, I made a motion to take the metal roof requirements.
Off the list.
Off the list.
We second that, I agree with that.
So we have, so then to clarify for Sylvia, then she's gonna come back with the other two things? And we're just.
The sheds.
And the requirement required for permits, come back with a, something on that? Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second on exempt metal buildings from the roof requirements and the development appearance criteria? All right, any more further discussion? Roll call vote please.
De Vries?
Aye.
Frederickson?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Boy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I was wondering if you could put uh, dimensions and everything back on the screen, like. Get the dimensions away from the, uh, away from the wall, away from the.
Setbacks. You can have, I've got a hidden copyright here, you can have.
Yep.
All right, item C, Z zero one eight dash zero zero one one. A city initiated request for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Kingman to consider increasing allowable size of detached accessory structures in all residential zoning districts. In certain residential zoning district, the city of Kingman zoning ordinance limits the size of detached accessory structures to ten percent of the lot area. This proposed tax amendment is to discuss removing that requirement and basic size allowance of all buildings on a lot by the floor area ratio correlated to the residential zoning district a property is located in. Excuse me. Sylvia?
Okay, so just a brief review, um, what you said. City of Kingman zoning ordinance limits the total square feet allowed for detached accessory structures to ten percent of the lot size in residential zoning districts. Over the years, there have been several instances where a property owner wanted to have a larger detached accessory structure, such as a detached garage, rec room, pool room, workshop, than what is allowed by the zoning ordinance. Property owners have found loopholes within the current zoning ordinance allowing, allowance by attaching the large accessory structures and/or accessory dwelling areas with like breezeways. Um, the proposed text amendment is to remove the requirement that the total square feet allowed for detached accessory structures to ten percent of lot size in single-family residential zoning districts. The October ninth planning and zoning commission meeting, uh, the commission voted six zero to move forward with this text amendment uh, to allow increasing the size of a detached accessory structure in all residential zoning districts. Here's a reminder that there is a building permit on hold for a proposed thirty-six hundred square foot detached RV garage storage room in an R one twenty residential zoning district. Their current allowance for the accessory structure is two thousand one hundred and thirty-nine square feet, which is ten percent of the twenty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-three square foot lot. Post-tax amendment would allow the applicant to move forward. Um, here's a table for the R one and the RMH zoning districts that basically shows um, if we remove the ten percent requirement that the floor ratios are as follows, like point six, point five and point forty-five in the R one forty. R two zoning district does not have a maximum allowance for accessory structures, but does have a maximum floor ratio of point fifty-five. And rural residential zoning district does not have a maximum allowance for accessory structures, but does have a maximum floor ratio of point twenty-five. Oh, we kind of went through this already pretty good in the discussion item. Staff is recommending amending sections three point two, zoning ordinance to remove the ten percent size limitation for accessory structures. And then if approved, the maximum allowable square feet of all buildings allowed on a lot will be based on the floor area ratio allowed in each residential zoning district. Got questions on that?
Questions, Sylvia?
Is the floor area ratio the same in percentages in all zoning district?
Commissioner, no, no, it's not. Um, here's a chart that shows the various R one zoning districts that have floor area ratios from point six in R one six um, to R one ten. And R one twenty has point five, R one forty has point forty-five. So basically a forty thousand square foot lot, floor ratio is point forty-five. In the R two zoning district, it has point fifty-five. And rural residential, which is typically an acre or more, it's point twenty-five.
Good, thank you.
Welcome.
This is the one.
Yes, we talked about it last.
Yep. I think this is the better option.
I do too.
Any further questions, Sylvia?
No.
Thank you, Sylvia. I'll open this up to the general public. Any comments? I see none, closed? All right, turn it up for discussion.
This seems like a simpler, more agreeable option and I'll even move to approve this.
I'll second it.
So I have a motion?
Yes, you do.
And I have a second. I have a motion been made and it's been seconded. Um, any further discussion? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner De Vries? Commissioner Frederickson?
Aye.
Sir Keith?
Aye.
Commissioner McCoy is?
Aye.
And Commissioner Shores?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, item D, Z zero one eight dash zero zero one two. A city initiated request for a tax amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Kingman to consider allowing secondary dwellings in certain residential zoning districts. The zoning ordinance does not allow accessory dwellings in a single-family residential zoning district such as the R one, single-family zoning district, RR, rural residential zoning district, and the RMH residential manufactured home district. This proposed tax amendment is to consider allowing accessory dwellings in these residential zoning districts. Sylvia?
You? Okay, so the city of Kingman does not allow for accessory dwelling units in single-family zoning districts such as the R one, RMH, and RR. Property owners have also wanted to build accessory dwellings to house relatives such as an elderly parent and have not been able to. Um, the requests are mainly from property owners who own lots which are half acre or greater. Uh, property owners have found loopholes again with this one, uh, with the current zoning ordinance allowing, allowance by attaching large accessory structures and accessory dwellings with the breezeways. Um, another reality is that some of the larger detached rec rooms, pool rooms, et cetera. Another reality is that some of the larger detached rec rooms, pool rooms, et cetera, have been converted into living areas later, basically after permit's final. We don't always know. Uh, this proposed tax amendment is to allow accessory dwellings in, in certain residential zoning districts with a minimum lot size of half acre or greater. And October ninth, we had, uh, Planning Commission decided to move forward with this tax amendment. For a proposed definition, Commissioner Sacker had asked me for that, accessory dwelling unit, ADU. Uh, an ADU is a secondary dwelling with its own entrance, cooking and bathing facilities and is located on the same property as the primary single-family dwelling. The ADU has the same owner as the pro-, primary dwelling. That's a proposed definition. Upon doing some further research of the zoning requirements in other zoning cities related to accessory dwellings, a majority of the other cities have the following requirements and it would be ideal to add these requirements with the proposed tax amendment. Only one accessory dwelling allowed per lot. The accessory dwelling shall not have a separate address other than the primary residence. All utilities for accessory structures must come from the primary structures' utility connections. Full kitchen facilities are allowed inside. Accessory dwellings shall meet the development appearance criteria. Shall have one designated paved parking space for the accessory dwelling. Livable area of the cess-, accessory dwelling that shall not be greater than fifty percent of the livable area in the primary residence. If an accessory dwelling is constructed as part of an accessory structure such as a detached RV garage, livable area cannot be, exceed fifty percent of the livable area of the primary residence and the total accessory building size in combination with the primary cannot exceed the floor area ratio of the zoning district. Note, the International Building Code defines living space, livable area, as the space within a dwelling unit utilized for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, bathing, washing, and sanitation purpose. The accessory dwelling shall conform to the setback requirements for the accessory structures. The accessory dwelling unit is intended to be used by guests and relatives of the occupant and principal household for non-commercial purposes. Staff does recommend amending sections two, three point two, and seven point two of the zoning ordinance to allow accessory dwellings in certain residential zoning districts as outlined in the attachment. And I had attached, uh, basically residential zoning that's half acre or greater. If you have any questions and have concerns with any of these additional items, please let me know.
I actually have one question, I thought about it when I left the last meeting.
Okay.
What happens when you have a lot that has a septic system? Is it get hooked into that septic system or are we putting in another septic system? Because as you know, per square footage of a house, a septic system has to fit that square footage. You can't really add another fifty percent of that dwelling and hook it into that septic.
No, either. If I, if I do anything wrong, but-
Sorry, I, I know that's kind of a weird thing, but it just, it's okay.
It's not a weird thing, in fact, we just, we just permitted a garage. That's really shocking. We just permitted a garage that way. So what, what we do is that they have to, as part of their application, turn in the county, so if it's in, well, obviously it's in the city we're talking about, uh, but they'll have to turn in their, uh, their septic permit, uh, which will be part of their, uh, their plat and everything put in. It'll ha-, also, that will tell us how big that septic is. So what they do, they have to go back to the county, they have to get it resized, so they're adding so many more, uh, drainage fixture units. So, uh, this situation was that it was a house out in the foothills, they had put in a fifteen-hundred gallon tank and it had sufficient, uh, perk and everything out there and with the leach field, but they were able just to hook into that. And they simply, they, there's a requirement, it's a, it's called a D-box, that they have to hook into it and, and do it. So there are requirements that the county will place on top of them.
But there's also requirements for where that, um, leach field is located away from the property. So if you have an acre lot and where it perks and your leach field is, is off into this corner, you can't put a dwelling right here and have it right next to that leach.
No, and, and that's where the, the county, so basically it's a resubmission to the county that they're gonna put that structure on there. And then they're gonna look for the setbacks from, from the tank itself, from the leach field itself, which is, uh, nine foot on-
Ten feet.
Or ten foot on-
I don't mean to correct you.
On most of theirs, yeah, ten, uh, yeah, nine or ten. Well, my wife corrects me all the time too. I thought it was, I always thought it was nine for some reason, so.
Yeah, it's ten feet. You can't build within ten feet of the septic tank or the septic lines-
Right.
Or the leach field or the reserve field because when you have a, a septic system, it is required to have a reserve field as well.
Correct.
Just in case the primary fails.
Correct.
So you can, you can just do another septic?
All that.
Can't just do another septic?
And it has to be-
Sure.
You can't, so would that, would we exempt the septic with the utilities?
Okay. All right, that was just, that was the only thing that kinda popped into my head when I left here, it's like, okay, we're doing it.
That would be all another permitting.
Right, it, it would and, and Commissioner Keith, so to answer your question, sure, you could do another septic.
So you would have-
Again, it would, it would all fall into the size of your lot-
Yep.
If, if the other septic's allowed to do this particular, or she could have taken out her septic tank, but a larger tank-
Right.
To maximize that.
Well, what I was saying is, should that say, like, all utilities have to be connected to the main home except, with that exception, a septic? Because you may have to do another septic. Sorry.
Commissioner, uh, that, that's electric.
Oh, I see. That's not considered.
Gas and electric has to be.
That makes sense, no two meters, okay.
Sewer, okay, so the areas that have, you know, the sewer hookup, sewer would have to be hooked in as well to the main.
Mm-hmm.
My concern was septic.
And then the other thing I had, a question I had is, um, well, Rancho and Wolf High foothills, those are all like point four eight. And so if we get into half acre, we would eliminate all of them?
Uh, Commissioner, we would allow, uh, half acre.
Yeah, um, I was saying, like, a lot of the Ran-, Rancho NFA and Wolf High foothills.
All on septic.
Yeah, no, I'm just talking about, um, half acre or greater for the second dwelling.
So they're just-
Right. So I was just mentioning that a lot of them, they, they're, they're half acre subdivision, but they do not meet those requirements. Um, a lot of them are like point, so is there any way to lessen that? Maybe like point four five? Because then you eliminate all, a ton of the City of Kingman that, because they're, they look like they're half acre lots up there, but they're shy.
Um, Commissioner Keith, so the R one twenty, uh, is, uh, we're looking at twenty thousand square foot.
Oh, so it is shy then, okay.
Yeah, and R one forty would be forty thousand square foot minimum. So I was saying about half acre, but that's literally the square foot for that now.
Okay, that makes sense.
Twenty R one forty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, my question was answered.
Thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome.
Open this up to the public. Any comments? None, closed? All right, open it up for discussion.
I think it's great.
This is a long time coming, I think it's a great idea.
Great, yes, I think it's-
I, I do too. I'm not opposed to it at all. I mean, they covered it. I mean, you can't split off the utilities and have separate meters and things like that, so it doesn't mean that people are just gonna add accessory residence for-
Rental property.
Yeah, for rental properties because it's still gonna run off, everything's gonna be ran off the primary. Um, so, and they're gonna tie into the septic system, it's, all bills are gonna be, you know, the same, so.
Have a motion?
I think this is a great idea. I'll make a motion to, um, to approve.
I have a motion?
I had to intervene real, I don't know if I'm allowed to, but remember we just went to our, our planning and zoning thing and they brought up the Airbnb. Is that something we should be thinking about or no? Vacation rental type thing?
Yeah, but that's a-
Because it had to be, well-
Different zone.
That's a different issue.
There's no zoning, it's just for-
It's, it, that's different.
It's not really different because they said it has to be a primary residence owner occupied and then they can, they can rent out, I mean, they can Airbnb a guest quarters. I'm just, that was what we went to the commission meeting thing here, the, the class thing for. I just wanted, that was a big, big class and I hate to do that, Sylvia, but that was something that was brought up.
Um, so Chairman Keith, uh, we did consider that we have Airbnbs out there and so that we put the intent is for guests of relatives and occupant.
The intent.
Yes, so that we can try to-
Try to eliminate that.
Yeah, steer it that direction.
Okay. I was just bringing that up, that's all.
That was brought up in the last meeting too, the concern of renting them out.
Rent, rental, um, a full rental is actually, I have to have R two, but they were just mentioning that with the Airbnb, you don't, you have to have R one, you have to have primary residence. And then you can rent out your space, but we don't really have that problem probably in Kingman, like you in Sedona and stuff like that, so. I just wanna make sure that you knew I was listening at, at the song.
I have a motion on the table?
I'll second it.
I have a motion, it's been, motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Commissioner De Vries is aye. Commissioner Frederickson?
Aye.
Keith? Aye. Commissioner McCoy?
Aye.
And we know Commissioner Shores is aye, so the motion carries. Thank you.
All right, item four, announcement by commission members, limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Well, I have two. Number one, I'd like to thank Mrs. Vicki Kress for her due diligence and her support of our commission here and we thank you for everything you've done for us.
I thank you, this is kinda bittersweet. I've been with planning and zoning and then the city council for many years and I've always felt that planning and zoning, um, could, has a very high bar in respecting each other's opinion, having, um, sometimes long discussions, but, but, but very respectful discussions and it's, it's always been a point of pride for me, so thank you very much. I've enjoyed every bit of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also would like to thank Mr. Gary Kellogg, Richard Ruggles, and Sylvia Schaefer and the City of Kingman for allowing Charmaine-
Yes.
Elizabeth and myself to attend the APA conference. It was, um, well worthwhile and very informative and I'd just like to put the thank you out there for everybody.
Mm-hmm.
And any further comments? May I make a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion.
I have a, I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.